Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming tonight. And I need to, I'm going to have to report out that we had a closed session and we had one item on our closed session and there's nothing to report out at this time. So we will go on to our regular agenda, which is, oh gosh, it's so confusing. But anyway, so we have, we have teleconference meetings and good evening and thank you for viewing the March 5th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconferencing access via Zoom. So we have the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that land will be, that is located, let's start over. The city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudini, over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the lands and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, four, nine, allows council members to attend remotely under very narrow circumstances. At least a quorum of the legislative body needs narrow circumstances. At least a quorum of the legislative body needs to be in person. We have the three of us, which creates this quorum for us here. But the members notified that the city need to participate remotely for what is called just cause. Just cause under the law is definedly narrowly, defined narrowly. Oh, my goodness, I hope I get better. Conscience is illness, contagious illness, well, we could be conscious of our illness. Caregiving for family members or travel for official city businesses are the most common accepted reasons. Councilmember Axson Salazar is in Sacramento on city business this evening to attend the California Association of Councils of Governments Regional Leadership Forum, and we've been participating in the meeting remotely under the provisions of this law. Her remote attendance for tonight's council meeting was brought to the city council on February 5th, 2025. Councilmember Axson Salazar, can you please confirm your attendance is due to travel for city business and please identify anyone 18 years or older that are in your room with you and the relationship to them?
Thank you, yes, I'm Sacramento on city business and there is no one in my room with me.
Thank you. Vice Mayor White is sick this evening and will be participating in the meeting remotely under the provisions of this law as well. Vice Mayor White, can you please confirm your attendance is due to illness? Please identify anyone 18 years of age or older in the room with you and the relationship to them.
Yes, I can confirm I am home not feeling well and I have nobody with me.
Okay, thank you. May we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So the next item is going to require a motion. What we'd like to do is move item under new business, consider the sponsorship of the Kinetik Universe's Kinetik Grand Championship Race planned on the Arcata Plaza on May 24th, 25. We'd like to move that up as the first item. Well, can we just move it up and we'll do it and then we'll do consent calendar afterwards?
Yeah, so moved, seconded.
Okay, so we'll have to have a roll call.
Okay, and just to confirm you're moving it to happen just before the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, just one moment here. Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Stillman?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much, and we will ask the city manager for a report, please.
Well, so I think we just moved it to after, right before the consent calendar, so we still have ceremonial matters.
Yes, I moved it up before the consent calendars.
We still have ceremonial matters.
Well, do you want to do all that? I was just, okay. You know, it's hard for me with this script and with this script to keep track, so I have a tendency to roll around.
We're here to help.
Places I shouldn't be. So, under ceremonial matters, the proclamation recognizing March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day will be read by Councilmember Matthews.
Recognizing March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day, whereas International Women's Day began in the United States in 1909, has been celebrated internationally since 1911 and is an official holiday in 28 countries. And whereas on March 8th, people around the world honor women and girls recognizing their contributions and supporting their political and social rights. And whereas women in many parts of the world are facing war and violence, increased repression and shortages of basic necessities caused by conflicts, concentration of wealth and power, and by the climate crisis. And whereas in the effort to provide food and shelter, safety and peace for their families and themselves, many brave women leave their loved homelands to seek acceptance in countries including our own, bringing with them their valuable strengths and skills. Whereas these women, as well as women of color, Black and Indigenous women, and women who faced oppression based on religion, disability, gender identity or preference, language, culture or class, have unique perspectives and knowledge that help us all to work towards social and environmental justice, peace and safety locally and globally. And whereas all of us benefit from the talent and spirit of social action that women and girls have made to our communities, cities, nation and world. We thank and honor our women and girls, appreciate their achievements and contributions to our society, and support their voices as they work to bring justice, peace and harmony to the world. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day and encourages all community members to take action on the international theme of invest in women and to observe this day by participating in local events and working to create a more inclusive world where all genders are able to live to their fullest potential, free from discrimination, oppression and violence. Dated March 5th, 2025, signed by Mayor Alexandra Stillman. And this will be accepted in person by Carolyn Goldhammer, member of Women's International League for Peace and Freedom.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'd like to thank you. We've been doing this with you guys for, oh my gosh, since, since 2011 was the first time, and our group, the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, is an international group with branches all over the world. And so we realized that we needed to be celebrating International Women's Day, and so we've been doing that since 2011. And, and so this Saturday, well, tonight we had a sing-along at the Playhouse, and that's why we're dressed kind of goofy, because we were, we were singing with the raging grannies. So on Saturday, if anyone can come, we're, this year we're honoring immigrants, and so on Saturday at the Jefferson Community Center, we are honoring, we're partnering with Centro del Pueblo. And so from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock, we're going to have dancers, of traditional dancers. There'll be Laotian dancers and Mexican heritage dancers, the traditional ones, and there'll be little kids and up to through high school. And then some people from Centro del Pueblo are making food for a nice dinner, so anyone that can come, it would be wonderful to have you. And, and it's just good to remember, especially with this times we have now, that we all have to support each other, and we have to support women and immigrants and men and kids and Ukraine. I mean, it's just everything, so that was ad lib. But anyway.
It's free too, this event.
Oh yeah, it's free. It's free. Our events are always free, so, okay, so thank you again for this.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Our next proclamation is in recognition of Girl Scout Week, March 9th through the 15th, 2025, and it'll be read by Councilmember Schaefer.
In recognition of Girl Scout Week 2025, whereas March 12th, 2025 marks the 113th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low of Savannah, Georgia in 1912. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence and character, helping girls gain leadership skills and learn lifelong lessons of contributing to their communities. And whereas Girl scouting increases girls' awareness of opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, government and other fields that can expand their horizons. And whereas this year, more than 3.2 million Girl Scouts nationwide, of which 25,000 of these are in the Girl Scouts of Northern California, and over 300 here in Humboldt County celebrate 113 years of this American tradition. They look to the 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts as living proof of their impact of this amazing movement. 71% of female senators in US Congress, 60% of the Female House of Representatives, all three former Secretaries of State, 90% of all female astronauts, 20% of Fortune 500 CEOs, and numerous successful businesswomen such as Sheryl Sandberg and Melinda Gates have all been Girl Scouts. Five of the nine most recent female governors are also Girl Scout alumni. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes the week of March 9th through 15th, 2025 as Girl Scout Week and applauds Girl scouting's commitment to developing leadership skills of America's girls. Dated March 5th, 2025 and signed by our Mayor Alex Stillman. And do we have some Girl Scout alumni up here on the city council?
Yes, I'm a Girl Scout.
Okay, see, and I think we're probably on Zoom, I know at least Stacey was, and I was a troop 78 here right in the Redwood Service Unit. And so we have Sheryl Kingham to accept this along with some of our Girl Scouts from this Redwood Service Unit.
Thank you. Go ahead. Thank you guys.
Thank you. There's some extra cookies for your missing members.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, it's very apropos, we're here the same day as International Women's Day was celebrated and that we have Girl Scout alumni on the council. I'm honored to represent our local Redwood Service Unit Girl Scouts as their leader advisor. I also have a troop of 16 high school seniors and ambassadors, most of whom attend Arcata High School. We currently have 11 active troops with over 100 girls in Arcata, McKinleyville and Trinidad area. Our cookie booths have been out since February 6th and they'll stay there till March 16th. The booth serves as a reminder that our community, that Girl Scout program is still alive and well here in Humboldt County. And I'd like to thank the local businesses that allow our booths in front of their stores like Murphy's Market, Eureka Natural Foods and Safeway, among others. And I'd like to thank our wonderful Humboldt customers who are helping the troops by purchasing over 20,000 boxes of cookies in the county. Girl Scouts have been selling cookies for 108 out of 113 years since Girl Scouts was founded. And the sale's important because it provides the money for the troop activities, camps and service projects, but it also provides financial support to our council, which provides a wide range of services, including financial aid for uniforms and camp opportunities that kids otherwise can't afford themselves. So 72% of the money you spend on the cookies stays local in Northern California with a minimum of a dollar of the box going to the troop itself that you buy from. It's a valuable learning tool for girls, learning skills like goal setting, decision-making, business ethics and money management. And this evening gives me a chance to show that not all of our Girl Scouts are cute little daisies, brownies and juniors. We do have girls, half our troops in this area are girls in middle school or high school. And they stay through that because of the leadership program. And they camp kayak, hike, work with younger girls, do service projects for veterans and seniors, and help at the summer camp as well. As the proclamation pointed out, we have some significant Girl Scout alumni, and now it's actually 92% of all female astronauts, including Sally Ride, have been Girl Scouts. The current governor of New Mexico also is a Girl Scout alum. So the next time you think about Girl Scouts, please don't just think about us selling cookies and making crafts, we do lots of other things. And you are supporting the largest successful leadership and empowerment program for girls and young women in the world. So thank you for this acknowledgement of Girl Scouts, and I hope you enjoy the cookies.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the cookies. Thank you for coming. So our next proclamation is in recognition of March for Meals Month, March 2025, and Councilmember Matthews will read that, thank you.
Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center observes the National March for Meals Campaign to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger and isolation in our communities. And whereas through the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, the Humboldt Senior Resource Center has served the Arcata community admirably for 48 years. The center provides nutritious meals to seniors which helps to maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalization or premature institutionalization. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center's congregate and home-delivered meal programs provide a powerful socialization opportunity for hundreds of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Arcata that March 2025 is March for Meals Month, the council urges all residents to honor the foundation, service organization, businesses and individuals who support our senior nutrition program as well as the seniors they serve. And that's dated March 5th, 2025, sound by Mayor Alex Stillman, and accepted virtually by Tasha Romo, Director of Nutrition and Activities, Humboldt Senior Resource Center.
Thank you.
I don't believe I'm seeing Tasha online here. Tasha, please raise your hand if you're present. Okay, I don't believe Tasha's present.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for reading that, I appreciate it. Next is reports by commissions and committees, and we have none this evening. And another one, next one is staff reports. All reports shall be specifically limited to city business and shall not request or lead to action by the city council at this meeting. So may we please have a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Stillman. I just have a few items to report. One of the things, I met with representatives from the city of Eureka, city of Fortuna, elected officials and staff from Humboldt County and county public health, and one of the things that we're doing right now is we're working on the development of a night, an ordinance to ban nitrous oxide sales in the city and the county. So I just want to let the council know that's moving forward and we're getting close to having a draft, and I expect to bring that to the council within the next couple of months. I am also working with city staff, and we met with HWMA Executive Director, and we have upcoming meetings with Recology in an effort really to advance and move the effort to comply with SB 1383, which is organics recycling forward. And so we have a big meeting on that tomorrow with all of the jurisdictions, HWMA Director and Recology to try to move that forward to provide those services to the community. I'm also working with the Equity Manager and Equity Arcata to coordinate a workshop with Centro del Pueblo to discuss the city's sanctuary city status and provide information about how the city would respond in immigration enforcement situations. And it really will be a workshop format where Lieutenant Ortega with Arcata Police Department will be presenting a larger overview of really just how the city would react in those situations. And there will be an opportunity to explain and describe what Equity Arcade is doing, what the city is doing in general, as well as some of those policing questions that Centro is really interested in. And then last, I had the opportunity to attend a social justice summit that was put on by Campus ODEI and our Equity Manager, Mo Harper-Dessir, on last Monday, and participated in that and activities to bring awareness to social justice issues in our community. So they did a really nice job putting that on, and I appreciated having the invitation. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. So next we go to oral and written communication, and early communications time is a time limit. The council values your comments and the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes. Speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have full three minutes of your time for public comment, this item will be continued at the end of the meeting. Speakers are granted, please, please let you know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements, and there may also be time to provide public comments specific to each item when the item is being reviewed by the council. So.
Can I interrupt before we start?
I can even go further, pardon me?
I was just going to interrupt before we start real quick. Would you like to go through the decorum?
Oh, yes. Okay. This is so hard for me, this is really between getting all the scripts today.
I definitely have too many scripts, and so I'm going to try to have less scripts in the future. Definitely have too many scripts, and so I'm going to try to have less scripts in the future, just for my sanity. So what do you want me to do?
Just to read the decorum statement, please.
Okay, let me find it. Disruptive behavior. Let me find it. Wait a minute. It's, that's not it. Oh, here it is. Okay, thank you. Okay. However, it's important to recognize that our meetings are structured to carry out important work of governing of the City of Arcata in order to maintain order and ensure that we accomplish our business efficiently. And we must address any disruptive behavior that hinders the purpose of these proceedings. I want to make it clear that any individual engaging in disruptive behavior will first be given a warning. If the behavior continues after the warning, the individual may be asked to leave the meeting. And disruptive behavior includes speaking beyond the allotted timeframe, discussing matters not relative to the agenda outside the jurisdiction of the city, making threats against members of the council, the public, engaging in personal attacks, insults, or using slanderous language that disrupts the meeting. We ask that all speakers be respectful of one another. Remember their proceedings are focused on important work of local governments, and maintaining an orderly and respectful environment is essential for us to function effectively as a city. Thank you for your understanding, and thank you all for your continued participation. So now we can have oral communications. And Joanne?
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary. And I was at Eureka City Council, by the way, and they have a little notice inside their chambers that's far less verbiage than that. But again, I think if we printed that out and had it available in the front as people come into the meeting, and maybe even have it online, it would not need to be read each time. It's just a suggestion. I'm going to be leaving the meeting early for a change because I'm going to a wonderful film by a group called Shine a Light on Palestine, and so I'll be heading over there soon. But I wanted to remind us the history of Arcata and history that was made a year ago tomorrow on March 6, 2024, when unanimously the City Council voted on a ceasefire resolution. And I still carry this around. The glass broke, so I had to remove that. But it was an important step, and I've been rewatching some of the meetings that led up to that meeting and that meeting as well. And it's a good history lesson for all of us, I do believe. So I just wanted to remind us that we did something really important a year ago. I also am participating in a very, another wonderful event in Arcata, the Zero to Fierce Festival that the Playhouse Arts, Arcata Playhouse puts on. I invited my friend from Homer, Alaska to come down last year, and she was able to plug in to her weaving watersheds, burning basket creation, where it is now on display throughout the week. And on Sunday, it will be in a impermanent way let go in fire. And I want to encourage everyone to come to that down in the Creamery District at Sunset on Sunday, March 9th. It's a beautiful, beautiful art thing. Was that two minutes? Okay. Okay, I'm so used to three minutes, so thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Pat, and I am here to endorse a sister city for Palestine. And as Joanne said, we did a lot to try to help them last year. But now it's really, really important, considering that Israel is trying to starve them out now, and also because of our political atmosphere with Trump. Israel is working with Trump now, and they're violating the ceasefire with Lebanon and Syria, and they're annexing the West Bank. I really do think that a sister city will help all the people in the Middle East, especially Israel, and especially Zionists. Because unfortunately, the way they're acting, they are encouraging antisemitism by the way they act. So I think that with our actions peacefully trying to get a sister city will really help things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thanks so much for having me. And I just wanted to say we had an incredible community dialogue this last Thursday. It was pretty well-attended, and we had the head chair of the Boulder Naba Sister City speak to us by video link. We had a community dialogue, and we came up with all sorts of ideas for what a local sister city with Palestine would look like. And the group came up with ideas of donating an ambulance, just like the Boulder Sister City has done, providing for food, water, and shelter, creating a desalinization facility, creating solar panels and power systems, providing tents. I mean, this is something that, in theory, could be done. Help planting olive trees, student exchanges, supporting mental health services, help create a vegetable garden in Gaza, as well as creating PENPAL projects for children to exchange between Arcata and Gaza City. So those are some of the ideas. We also had Shay Free Love, who's reported to you as an ambassador for the project in different ways. He also is planning to fundraise to go to Palestine with the Boulder Naba Sister City in May. And we've done all this because we're not waiting to create a sister city, to start doing some of the work. And we have an event coming up on the 29th of March with Dr. Sui Ang, the co-founder of Medical Aid for Palestinians, one of the leading suppliers of medical aid in Gaza, as well as Gaza Sunbirds, Kareem Ali, really great group. I hope that you can catch the event on the 29th, right after International Women's Day.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak here tonight? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we moved by vote, we moved the Kinetic Sculpture or the Kinetic Universe Kinetic Grand Championship Race Planning to this point for a report from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. We had a request, a letter of requests that came in for the council to support the Kinetic Universe to throw, to donate to the Kinetic, to the Grand Kinetic Championship. I want to make sure to use the right words. So the staff's recommendation is that the council approve a sponsorship for the Kinetic Universe's Grand Kinetic Grand Championship Race in an amount equivalent to what the user fees for that event would be, which is approximately $1,300. We have Nick Harris from Kinetic Universe on the line. And so when I'm done with the staff report, if you have questions, he can help answer those. Just a little background, which I'm sure most of the council is aware. Since 1969, the Kinetic Race has been a North Coast tradition. It includes a three-day marathon spanning over 40 miles of Humboldt County's, California, Humboldt County's towns, beaches, trails, and the rivers. Every Memorial Day weekend, the Grand Championship is Humboldt's largest and oldest free-to-watch event, attracting attention from the local and national media, as well as thousands of fans from Humboldt and around the world. This is one of the signature events that's put on in the City of Arcata and really helps to put the city on the map. There's a significant public benefit from the impacts to the local economy, from the visitors, and the entertainment for the local community. And Arcata has a benefit of hosting one of the most prestigious portions of the race, which includes judging and pageantry, and provides opportunities for festive accessible location that the public can view the sculpture racers up close as they circle the plaza in the lead-up to the race. There is no charge to the public for this event. The representatives from Kinetic Universe contacted the city and shared that the race has been financially struggling in the post-COVID era and indicated that rising costs of services and goods and the reduction of donor support have left the race in financial danger. The Kinetic Universe is asking for the city's support to contribute the amount equivalent to the anticipated city fees for the use of the plaza for the event, which are approximately $1,300. The event would be on May 24th from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The city would still require a $500 deposit to ensure that the cleanup and other items they would be responsible for are completed. And although the council has not identified specific events to receive support from the city, the council did express its desire to support such events in the city and set aside $25,000 in the annual budget for that purpose. If approved, the funds from the event would come from Fund 101-10-01-52104. No funds from the source have been used, and if approved, there'd be approximately $23,700 left for the remainder of the fiscal year. A copy of the letter is attached, and if you have any questions that I can answer or Nick on the Zoom meeting, we'd be happy to answer those.
The person on Zoom, would you like to address at City Council?
Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you.
Oh, hi. Sorry. You think after many years of COVID, we'd be used to not being on mute. Hi, my name is Nick Harris, and I'm one of the organizers for the Kinetic Grand Championship, which is mouthful. And more than anything, we just wanted to thank you for your consideration. The last couple of years have been financially quite tough for us, and we're to the point of begging and pleading and trying to find all the help that we can get. So again, thank you for taking the time to hear us out. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Well, thank you for speaking to this, and so I would like to bring it to the council. We have three council members present, and we have two on Zoom. So the ones present, would you like to start with anything or say anything?
I don't have any questions, but yeah, we set aside this money for this. I'm happy to support this. This is something that has been around for a long time, is very quintessentially Arcadian, and brings a lot to our local community, and supporting events like this is kind of, it's a no-brainer for me. So happy to support Kinetics always.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's probably well-known that the Kinetic Sculpture Race is part of my Arcata origin story. I came up here like 30 years ago with a boyfriend, and over this weekend. And this was the reason that I fell in love with Arcata and why I wanted to move back here was because of what I experienced that weekend and the glory. I think that it's also another great point about, you know, all of these amazing local events and how important, if we want them to continue to sustain themselves, that we need to, if you enjoy them, volunteer. Man, there's so many cool things happening. I personally will be putting up no parking signs the night before for the Kinetic Sculpture Race. So it's not that hard to take a couple hours out of your life to do something to help these amazing events. I love the Kinetic Sculpture Race. I am happy to support this.
Thank you. We'll now ask Councilmember Atkinson Salazar, would you like to make any comments?
I agree with everything that was just said. And even if we just look at it on a more practical level, I'm sure the revenues that that scope of people brings into our community more than makes up for that. So I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor White, would you like to comment?
I concur for the glory. I'd like to approve a sponsorship for the Kinetic Universe's Kinetic Grand Championship Race in the amount equivalent to the plaza event fees of 1,300 for the sculpture race to be held on the plaza, Arcata Plaza, on May 24th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. So we will need a roll call vote, please.
And could we go to public comment?
Is there anyone, pardon me?
Can we ask for a public comment before we go to a vote?
Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I do not see any hands on Zoom.
Okay, so we're going to bring it back to the council for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Stillman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for the report and for coming tonight and speaking to us. So that moves us on to the consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If a discussion is required, that item is removed from this consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, the council members can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Members of the public may comment on any item remaining on the consent calendar in the comment period before the vote. A, approval of the waived reading of the text and consent to read by title only for any ordinance on this agenda. B, approve the minutes of the City Council's special meeting, February 12th, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of February 19th, 2025. D, bi-weekly report on dispersments. E, adopt Resolution Number 245-37, directing the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee to provide physical accountability for Measure H. F, amend the contract for 2024 timber heritage logging and log hauling with Ford Logging, Inc. in the amount of $16,607.86 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, adopt Resolution Number 245-36, incorporating a list of projects for fiscal year 2025-2026 to be funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. H, adopt Resolution Number 24-330, amending class and pay for OE3 represented employees to include the discontinuance of transit operation assistance and transit bus driver classifications and authorize the deletion of one full-time person. I, approve a letter of support for Assembly Bill 2263 regarding emergency regulations to remain in effect for Scott and Strasta River in-stream flows and authorize the mayor to execute all applicable documents. J, request the annual engineers' report in preparation of notices to declare the city's intent to continue delivering and collect from existing assessment districts to include Mav River Parkway Business Center, Windsong Subdivision, and James Creek Meadow. Would the council like to remove any item from the agenda? Would the council members on Zoom like to remove anything on the agenda? Is there anyone in the public that would like to remove something from the agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Just to clarify, are we welcoming public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes. Is there anyone that wants to comment?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar. I'll second.
Thank you very much. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Stillman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business. Consider adopting Resolution Number 24-35, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata accepting mid-year budget review and approving budget revisions for the fiscal year 2024-2025. May we please have a report? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Just a couple things before we get started. This is our opportunity where we check in at basically mid-year. Typically, it's either through December. This year, we included through January. It gives staff an opportunity to update the budget review items and then also bring you budget adjustments that have occurred since July 1st through the end of January. Just a couple trends. There's nothing real different about this budget that you're going to see tonight. It's very similar to what you adopted. There are a couple changes. But really, it's still very much driven by capital. You'll see that your biggest expenditures and your biggest revenue sources are tied to those, even with a few adjustments. Our revenue has remained stable through the first half of the year, which is good news, given sort of the state of the economy and some of the unknowns. And then there are, and I point this out, we are asking for three positions during mid-year, which is a little abnormal. We typically save those up and do those during the normal budget process. And I wanted to point those out, and I'll point those out as we go forward and how those are going to be paid for. Again, there's just some real basic things that we'll do tonight. You'll get an update on the current financial status. You'll look over the recommendations made for changes at mid-year based on unanticipated expenditures and new projects. We'll review a little bit of what happened in actual year 23. We'll review a little bit of what happened in actual year 2324, and then we can preview the upcoming budget, and we'll start talking about some of the things that we'll be addressing in the next year's budget. So this is a summary of the adjustments that you're approving tonight, and there are a lot of them. If you looked through the exhibit to the resolution, there are 10 pages of itemizations, this is just a summary of it. There are fairly big dollars, but again, I can tell you that the vast dollar amounts are tied to capital projects, and most of those aren't capital projects that are going away, with the exception of one that we'll talk about in a minute, but they're just timing issues where we're moving those projects, they're not gonna occur this year, so we're moving some of the budget and some of the revenue probably to next year when it makes sense. As far as this summary, the top line there, the mid-year adjustments, those are the ones where staff have actually gone through line by line and made requests, either increasing or decreasing amounts. Your purchase order carry forwards, the one below that, which is also a fairly large amount, is anything that is subject to a contract or a PO at year end that doesn't get completed, and again, this is largely capital projects. We actually will roll those funds forward into the new year, so it's not new budget, but it is moving budget from one year to the next, then we bring those back to you so you can approve those. There were a couple approvals that you made on, within staff reports over the year. Two that come to mind is that you approved $470,000 to supplement the baseball stadium improvements, and then there was a, just under $75,000 that was for project management for Old Arcata Road that also came out of fund balance. We've got a number of them that are offset by revenues, and if you can do the math up there, you can see that those numbers don't tie, they're about $204,000 off. That's because it was revenue from the prior year and, and didn't necessarily get rolled forward. You did approve probably the bulk of the new budget items was $251,000 for the, I'm missing the words, it was the David Loyah's project. Yes, no, it wasn't the strategic plan, it was the. Huh? No, no, it wasn't either of those. It had to do with the agreement, the tax sharing agreement, excuse me. Sorry about that. And then you had the ARPA reallocations, and we talked about those back in August to make sure that we got all of those spent, those funds spent before the 12/31/2024 year end. I wanted to highlight a few of these, just to make you aware of them. We do have that $269,000. This is basically funds that were originally budgeted in ARPA. In August, we transferred those funds to pay for staffing so that we can make sure that we spent the funds, and we agreed that we would move that budget to the general fund so that they would be available for City Council going forward. We do have about $263,000. We have three pretty significant retirements that'll have leave cash outs this year. We are asking that you authorize us to put $488,000 into our Section 115 Pension Liability Trust account. Just as a reminder, this is a fund that, it does designate those funds specifically for pension liability, but the nice thing is that you can use this somewhat of as, as a reserve because you can pull those funds at any time, and you could use them towards your annual contribution, mandatory contribution, so it could offset something in a, in a bad year. We've got a $60,000 for a Food Works Improvement. Basically, we've got some unusable space, they want to redo so that it would be rentable. It will receive rents, but I can tell you the payoff of the 60,000 is many years, it's not right away. One, one position we are asking for is $125,000 per year. This will be prorated for the last quarter of the year, but it's a utility analyst position to help out with, to add to our GIS and our asset management programs, and it will be primarily paid for by our utilities. We've got $26,000 in the finance department. It's a net because we would replace two part-time positions with a full-time to cut down on some of the, the turnover in that department, get some stability. We've got $50,000 for cybersecurity plan consulting, and then the next item, the next item on your agenda is, is also the approval of the water wastewater rate study contract of $125,000. And then I also wanted you to make, make you aware that we did remove $1.7 million from the general fund that had been set aside for a property acquisition on West. And moving on to Measure H, we are treating this separately because we wanna make sure that we track the revenue and the projects and the expenditures so that we can be accountable to the voters who put this in place. So we are, we are adding $700,000 in revenue for this year. That'll be for collections from April 1st through June 30th, our, our first quarter of collections. We are proposing three one-time uses of the funds and one new position. $25,000 is for failing ADA doors at the Arcata Community Center. These are 20 years old. We're also proposing $275,000 to reprice the roof so that it can support the solar that we got a loan, a low-cost loan for recently, which will pay for the cost of the solar. The roof is 20 years old, so it is due. This is not sort of out of line with our maintenance process. We are asking for $50,000 for encampment and illegal dumping cleanup. You know, this is really about the impacts of some of our unhoused and those issues. And then one full-time position, which would be an environmental services facility crew leader position, and this, as you'll see, it's $27,000 this year. In next year, it would be 110,000, and then I've added a little bit of an inflation factor there because I wanna make sure you know that that's an ongoing cost, so it will be a permanent use of Measure H funds. The nice thing about that position is it would allow us to open the restrooms up at Redwood Park during operating hours, so. And then, wanted to kind of remind you, it, it gives you an idea of looking forward to next year. You'll see that we'll have with what we are gonna carry forward from this year, a little over $3 million in revenue. We've got that full-time position, and then we've got about a million dollars in existing programs, and this is really that long-term deficit that we talked about when we initially put Measure H on the ballot. And what I'm suggesting here is that during budget season, we'll probably wanna go through those programs and make sure again that those are programs that you wanna continue and, and that you wanna use Measure H funding for. And because Emily Sinkhorn was so nice to give me pictures of her Measure H request, I've got some pictures of the doors that are failing and the roof at the community center. We're gonna do a really brief overview of the financial position of the city, and I just wanted to, I, I know I've introduced these terms before, but I wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. When we talk about funds, we're talking about an independent budgeting and accounting entity, somewhat like you would consider a subsidiary company in a, in a, for private business. Fund balance is the accumulation of all the revenue versus less expenses for all prior years, and it really is what you, we, we refer to as your reserves. You'll also, I'll also sometimes refer to it as current resources if it's an enterprise fund, but it's that one-time money that's available for projects, particularly capital. Our general fund, which is our primary fund, and it's the one that basically is all resources that are not accounted for separately, including general operations. This is the one that your police department comes from, your Parks and Rec admin, it really is the primary government source. Special revenue funds are funds that we receive typically from other entities, and they have specific legal restrictions on how we can use them. A lot of these will be tied to grant programs and similar specific uses. And then our enterprise funds, a good example of this is our utilities, our water and our wastewater utility, where user fees are really supposed to support the cost, all of the cost of the funds. So I know I always put a lot of numbers on pages, so we'll walk through this really quickly. This is all of the funds summarized together, and you can see, if you start in the upper left-hand corner, you've got all of your revenues and transfers, and you can see the, the fiscal year 2025 budget right there in the center is what the budget was prior to mid-year. You'll see your mid-year adjustments, and in this case, you can see that we have actually reducing, we're reducing revenue by about $4 million, and we're reducing our expenditures by just under $3 million, and the net is a million-dollar increase in the overall impact to, decrease to your, your general fund. And then you can also see what our fiscal year 2024 actuals were. And a couple things that I would point out that you'll wanna kind of look at as we go through here is that we typically do not spend all of our budget in any given year, and so even though we've got our mid-year 2025 budget here, I would be extraordinarily surprised if in all areas we hit the budget. There will be a little bit of savings, there always is, and you can see that in the actuals one for 2024, you can see that we actually added about $6.5 million to the bottom line, and if you went back and looked at our budget from that year, we had actually budgeted taking a couple million dollars out of reserves. So we ended up much better than we anticipated from a budgetary standpoint. Again, capital remains our largest primary source of funding and expenditures, 47% of the current expenses. Personnel services is second, and it is the largest portion of our operating budget at 25% of the total budget. If you compare the budgets, the budget here to actual from last year, it's up 12%. Again, there'll probably be some savings that will drop that, and if you compare last year's mid-year to this year's mid-year, it's about 7.6% up, and that really accounts for a couple things. It's that we gave 5% increases to most staff, we had some additional pays that added to that, and then cost of benefits. And then the one other item that is kind of changed our personnel budgets is that we have a higher or a lower vacancy rate, so we are having better luck filling positions, particularly in our police department downstairs. Just the other thing I would point out is that the second largest revenue source, and this is important because we're, we going forward, we're gonna be talking quite a bit, not tonight, but over time about our utilities, and charges for service are the, are second to capital programs, and about 92% of that, $15.7 million is water and wastewater fees. And then finally, we've already talked about your reserves down here. If we spend all of the budget, we'll use about $4.1 million in reserves, but I do wanna point out that that still is a pretty strong, healthy reserve, and you can see it's even better than we were last year at the beginning. And we'll talk a little bit more about fund balance and our reserves and resources. So this is the same, the same chart, just looking specifically at your general fund. Again, here, the general fund taxes are your primary source, they're about 53%. We did have a small, we did have that increase because of the additional Measure H funding. We are key, otherwise, we are essentially on budget on all of our other tax sources. Intergovernmental, which is mostly made up of capital grants, the primary, the bulk of that is, is the next largest. Personnel services in our general fund makes up a much larger portion, it's 54% of the total, and if you exclude capital and look at just the operations, it actually is about 73%. And we are projecting, if we use all of our budget, we'll use about $1.4 million of your reserves, and you'll can see that that'll still leave us with about $14 million in total estimated fund balance. This includes your 30% mandatory reserve plus your unreserved. And one of the things that I wanted to take a look at, because I thought it would be good for you to understand sort of the growth we've had here, and, and sort of what the last 10-plus years of your financial history has done to your fund balance, and there's three lines. The blue line is your fund balance, and so you can see how it's increased over time, and we've started to, to use a little bit of reserves in the last couple of years, a chunk of that being, paying towards the pensions in the last budget cycle. You'll see, I took, and the orange almost gets a little bit slided out here, but the orange takes fund balance in 2015 and assumes just inflation increases. So if you were just getting the, the increases of inflation and banking those, you can see how much lower you would be. And then I wanted to take a look at what would happen with construction inflation because of course, one of our primary uses of fund balance and reserves is capital projects. And you can see, while it certainly is, grows at a higher rate than our normal inflation, we have still been able to put away quite a bit of money, and you know, that's cost savings and having some benefits from some bumps in pandemic revenues. But it does show that you're, you're still in relatively good shape. So your special revenue funds, I've combined them here, there's about 30 of them, and they include everything from your CDBG funds to road taxes. It also used to include ARPA and some of the big things like our Home Key projects, so you can see some of the changes here. The most significant, again, it's capital changes, and it's in our streets transportation programs in those capital projects. You will see, if you look at the green line here, we did have a, a pretty good bump in our expected expenditures for staffing. The big one was we had a senior project manager, which is funded primarily from grant proceeds associated with the projects that they're working on. And again, these are really specific resources that are dedicated to uses, so you wouldn't necessarily expect that you would build up significant fund balances because you typically are kind of geared with spending them. You do have a core redevelopment housing fund in, in this particular source, and you can see you're at, at the end of this year, if you spend all of your budget, you'll be at about 7.66 million. I did the same graph of fund balance over the last 11 years, and I was a little surprised that it actually built up as much as it did. Part of the reason though for that was that in this period of time, we got some of those COVID grants, and we got a lot of that money upfront, and then have been spending it down, which is why you'll see sort of the significant drop in our current estimate. And again, you can see the comparison to what it would have been if it just increased by inflation and construction inflation. So the water fund, I know we had quite a conversation about this, so I won't go into it. There's just a couple things to point out here. We have reduced intergovernmental revenue by $2.1 million, and this was the grant that we will not be getting for the water line replacement project. We also reduced about $3.8 million in capital outlay. That is really just moving those projects into the next year, they'll, they'll come back to at budget season then. And I wanted to point out that current resources, which is similar to fund balance, but their, the counting's a little bit different for this, are still really strong. And if we move to the next graph, you can see again, you know, you've got really good strong growth in your fund balance, you did build up those rates for capital projects, and as we've already discussed, the biggest challenge is that even though this is a good sum of money, it doesn't meet the needs of the ongoing capital infrastructure needs, but that you, you did try, and so the challenge really comes back to here in that we didn't start with as much as we probably needed to as far as building those reserves, and also another argument for getting projects done. Your wastewater fund, again, this one certainly is dominated by the wastewater treatment project, and you can see in green that the, or, excuse me, in yellow, sort of the offset, the revenue and the expense from that, which dominates the, the total of the fund. The ongoing operations are, are quite a bit less. And here, you, you can see that we are really sort of building back up the resources, the current resources in this fund. Same graph as you've seen before, you can see how we've built up the resources. I will tell you that that dip in fiscal year 2023 was all about the timing on the reimbursements that we get on the wastewater treatment plant, because those are such significant bills, and we bill them by quarter, and there was one that wasn't ready and didn't get booked as a receivable in '23, but the expenses had happened, it hit our cash, and then you can see where in 20, fiscal year 2024, when, once we received it back in, it bounced right back up. And I, as you've seen from our other long-range plans, we foresee that these amounts will continue to rise in the future years. So with that, I wanted to just kind of step back and preview a few of the things that we'd like you to think about going into budget season. I believe you already received today a doodle poll trying to set up budget workshops, so we are already moving into our fiscal year 2526 budget season. One of the first things we'd like to take a look at probably in April is a review of City Council goals and priority projects and make sure that we're in line and, and getting those from you, and staff is going to recommend that we look at adding economic development to one of the goals. The million dollars that we saw in the offset to Measure H, you, we would like you to kind of take a look at those programs, and we wanna make sure that we wanna continue to fund all of those, and if it's at, at the same or different levels. Obviously, our long-term capital improvement program will continue to be a large part of our budget and also our time. And then going forward, the challenge right now is just, we don't really know. Like I said, our, our revenues are stable currently, but I don't know what to expect in the future. So we'll be, we'll expect the unexpected, we'll be conservative and cautious. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So questions from the council that's present, and then we'll go to the council members on Zoom.
Yeah, thank you, Tabitha. I, I am so concerned about what our future is going to look like with all of this federal money. I mean, we are already seeing like the building behind my office, everybody was. So I really appreciate and understand the importance of being conservative, and I really want to stress that to everybody that this is really the time to kind of buckle down and and do things that are really important. I know that these capital improvement projects we have, I do feel like we need to get them done as soon as possible since who knows what's going to happen with tariffs making things even more expensive. So just getting those things underway. I think that I'm really glad of those two positions. I think it's important that we start having some more institutional knowledge and doing some succession planning. And I understand that's what those two possession, those two positions will seek to do, have a full-time finance position that, you know, can soak up your knowledge and be full-time and hopefully, you know, will stay with us for a long time. And that that other position is is something that's so important to have someone in there for the long term. So I think that's great. I love things like the Food Works Building that is, you know, it will eventually, you know, pay for itself, and it's giving entrepreneurs and small businesses, you know, more opportunities, which I think is something that's going to be so important coming up is just, you know, supporting our businesses here and, you know, making sure that, you know, with whatever's going to happen, that, that we're just, you know, hunkering down and supporting our community. I think that that's all I have for now, unless something that anybody else says kind of jots my brain, but yeah, good.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Sure, I don't really have any questions just due to being able to meet with Tabitha and then hear again, always very clear, comprehensive presentation. It's really appreciated. Did you want us to give you some of those priority projects to start teasing your brain for budget? Or should we hold off on them? I don't know, but kind of related to just a couple of things that you said as well, but.
I think getting some of those priority projects, if you wanted to give those to me in an email or or send them over, because during the time that we'd really start discussing those is in the budget workshops. And so, yes, we, we want what you're thinking about and been listening over the last six months. And so I have an idea of some, but certainly if there's ones we haven't.
I know, we don't get to tell the public as often, though. But no, and it just excited for those goal-setting and budget sessions. They're always really, it's a good one for people to come out to because I feel like we can also like interact with the public a little bit more and, you know, really hear from the department heads. And so that's always a great experience. And just thank you for your presentation because it's exciting to start, you know, kind of thinking in our minds how a lot of these projects that we do want to see and have talked about in the past, you know, can be funded by things from Measure H or, you know, that will be possible by adding like this park aid position and things like that. And so it's, it's good to see that we're in the position that we're in, just like what Meredith was saying, that with a lot of the uncertainty, and I know we're probably all hearing it like at our JPAs and stuff too, and having standing items at all of our meetings to get updates on what's going on, you know, to see that if things really go south economically, that we will be able to kind of weather the storm a bit. So it's, thank you, and just, it's always so clear, Tabitha, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could I just add one thing to respond? You know, so one of the things we've been doing in our departments is tracking the various grants. And so we have a number of large grants in community development that we have staff that work on. And so right now, what we're hearing from community development staff is that the programs are not indicating any changes and that we're, you know, the, the staff that we're working with at HCD, which administers a number of those grants, they seem to be sound for now. And then also, we have some large transportation grants, a Sunset Avenue grant, the Sunset Avenue Project, fourteen million, the Reconnecting Communities, a twenty-five million. So we're, we're still hearing that those are solid. But just to reiterate what you heard from Director Miller was that you never know what's going to come out, you know, in the, in the near future. And we continue to be surprised by some of the, the changes at the federal level. So we're thinking about that and talking about that, but we do have large numbers of staff whose salaries are dependent on some of the grant programs that we administer.
Thank you. We'll go now to Vice Mayor White. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I, well, things seem to be sound for now on the various projects that Merritt had just highlighted. I do concur with my fellow council members in light of the uncertainty moving forward that we do need to be conservative. I guess I have a question. Are we going to go through the mid-year proposals, budgets that we've highlighted for the two thousand and twenty-five? And if so, could I make a comment on a couple items?
We weren't going to go through any more detail, but I think you can certainly make comments or ask questions about specifics.
Absolutely. So on item page seventy-two of one twenty-six, we talk about the Measure H revenues, and we have bullet points of various projects. And there, one of them is the fifty thousand for encapping other illegal cleanup in Arcata for New Directions and John Shelter. Shelter, and then it says and. And so I would like to propose that we put five thousand to start back the monthly clean the sidewalk events in Valley West with Valley West community being heavily impacted by the large population of our unhoused community on the sidewalks and streets in Valley West. We're, we're definitely in need some love. And I have been receiving a lot of input from the community that they really want to be hands-on, get involved. And it makes the community feel like they're doing something, something that they can physically see and get a reward right there and then. So, yeah, I would love to see if we could put maybe five thousand of that towards our, and that would be for a full year of the monthly cleanup. And I think that was all I, yeah, I know we're pressed for time, so I don't want to let Stacy go next.
And can I just respond and make a suggestion there, which is we have the fifty thousand. I think five thousand could be accommodated in that if that, that becomes to, to address Valley West within that fifty thousand. And specifically, since you mentioned a year, that probably would be with something, this is going to be just for from now till the end of the year through June thirtieth. So there'll probably be an opportunity to talk about that in the next budget cycle. Does that work?
Sounds great, thanks.
So we'd like to go now to Councilmembers Atkinson, Salazar.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to thank Tabitha for meeting with all of us, taking the time to do that. It, it just helps to go over it a couple of times. So thank you for taking the time and for Merritt for setting that up for us. I just wanted to just say that I am really excited about adding the Environmental Services Crew Leader position. And just to, I know, and I also want to be clear, just so people know, that is not the amount for them just to open the restrooms at Redwood Park, but that is one of the perks that comes along with that. And I think that our community will be really happy about that. So I hope that that, that goes well. And I, I think that was all I had, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I wanted to ask if you would please talk about Measure H and the increase in, in the sales tax and also Measure O and how the, just for people to understand what our sales tax has gone up to, if you would be kind enough to do that, please.
So as of April first, we have two increases that will impact the city of Arcata. And of course, the first one is the city's three-quarter percent. So our sales tax will go, because of the passing of the, the Measure H, the city's sales tax, it'll go to nine point two five percent. Then in addition to that, the county was successful with their one percent tax request, and that will also apply not just in unincorporated, but in, but in the incorporated areas throughout Humboldt County. So that'll be an additional one percent throughout the county. When you add that to the nine point two five percent, it increases the tax rate in Arcata to ten point two five percent, which will be the same as it is in Eureka. It'll, they'll also see an increase to ten point two five percent as of April first.
Thank you, I appreciate that because I know that all of a sudden there's a lot of concern in the community, and they're trying to figure out what's happening and where should they go shopping now? Or should they go to Oregon? Or where should they go in order to save money on their sales tax? And they could spend money on their gas, you know, just getting there. So I wanted to ask a question. Vice Mayor White brought up the five thousand dollars for cleanup in Valley West. How would that be in your thought, how was that managed? Would that be under our new full-time person that we're going to have opening the bathrooms and so forth, that that would be a job that they would take on?
I, I think that it would be additional, it would be outside contract work. And originally, we had talked about the fifty thousand that we had looked at John Shelter and New Directions because he has the relationship with working in the homeless camps and has been pretty good at that. But it would be, it would use that same source. And I, I don't know that I would manage it. I'm sure that between Environmental Services, our city manager and our police department, they would organize those cleanups depending on where they were at. But I don't have the details on that.
Thank you. Today, one of the things, oh, it's too early, I'll wait till later, never mind. Any other comments from anybody? Is there anybody online, anyone in person?
I had a really quick question before we get too far, is that okay?
Yes.
It's on page seventy-four of the PDF, all city funds and expenditures and expenses. And it's the second chart under the Arcata Mad River Transit, Transit Fund, one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Is this amount for our fair share? Or I'm just trying to figure out what that number is.
So you're, so the one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars? So that is actually for the, that is the total budget for our transit program? So that is all of the buses, it also includes the dial-a-ride. And that is, that is the amount that will be transitioning over to the HTO or, or most of those funds will in the new year and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, I thought so, I just wanted to clarify, thank you for that.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Just because I was going through this list and it made me think. But on the, the four hundred and eighty-eight thousand to our pension liability, I just, could you go over how we're doing with that? And like, if, you know, where, where we're at and just kind of like jog my memory of what the difference between those accounts are briefly?
Sure. So we, we basically, when we did the big seven and a half million dollar payments in the prior fiscal year, we did two things with it. We took two and a half million dollars and we put it in the Section one fifteen trust, which sets it aside so that it can only be used for pension obligations. And that's, those are the funds that we have the ability to pull out at any time. We can, and they have to be used for pension, but it would provide us in any given year, if we needed those funds to offset a shortfall in our budget, we could pull, you know, up to, and we spend at least, we're up to three million dollars plus a year in pension obligations. We could pull three million dollars, and it would allow us to sort of buffer that year, and we could use it like we would an emergency reserve. The other five million dollars that we paid, we actually paid directly to CalPERS, and we paid down our liability. So the benefit from that is longer term, that there's a two-year sort of catch-up provision, but after that, it will reduce our annual contributions. And that will be spread out over the next fifteen years. So it will reduce our ongoing costs, but we can't get that money back. The only way we get it is hopefully reducing our costs going forward. And so what the four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, we're proposing to put it in that one fifteen trust so that we still have the ability, if we needed to use it, for example, next, you know, something, it gets, things get hard next year, and we really want to conserve the cash we have on hand, we would pull money out of that fund, pay our pension obligations for the year, and that would free up money elsewhere or allow us to hold on to cash. And that's kind of the idea behind it. And just to remind you, it's, we're using from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a nice, about one point eight million dollar surplus in the fund, and we're, we're taking twenty-five percent, approximately twenty-five percent of that, and that's how we got the number that we're using.
Yeah, and the great thing about that fund is that it collects interest, so.
It does, yes.
Okay, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
And then I would like to bring it back to the council.
Sure, so I'd like to make a recommendation that the council adopt Resolution two forty-five dash thirty-five, accepting the proposed mid-year budget revisions for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Thank you. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White? Mayor Stillman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody. And thank you for your presentation and being so thorough. So we'll go on to our next item, which is B, approve a contract in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to Bartel Wells Associate for Water and Waste Water Rates and Capacity Charge Studies and an indirect cost allocation plan. Maybe you have a staff report, please.
Thank you, yes. This is an item that we would normally put on, on consent, and it would pass through. But because it is related to the potential to increase water and, and less likely, but wastewater rates, I wanted to just bring it forward and make sure that you're aware of what we're, what we're contracting for and the importance that this information is to making decisions in how we deal with potential rate increases going forward, how we plan for them, and how we structure both our water and wastewater fund to make sure that they stay, they stay, you know, fiscally sustainable and that we are taking care of our capital needs. And I just wanted to run through really quickly kind of how this would work. First of all, because this is the information that is going to be used by staff, by our consultants, by you to make decisions, and even the public to judge whether or not those are appropriate, it has some real consequences and importance. It's also something that we probably won't get the final rate study information until about the end of July. And so there'll be a few months before we get that really complete information on, on what those, the status of our current financial structure, rate models, you know, what those options are, building in all the capital, that, that real strong model that you would, you would want, where you look at all your aspects, all your options, and make decisions based on it. So a couple of things, they will develop forecasts and projections, and this is the rate model. This will take into account all the existing information and then project out ten years. And so we can really see what the impacts are from a detailed level. They'll evaluate the financing alternatives for capital improvements. So whether we issue debt, we finance with cash, what other alternative sources are out there, including federal, state, and local programs, and then even long-term versus short-term. They'll review our reserve levels and make sure that they feel like they're adequate based on our needs and make recommendations. They'll develop long-term cash flow projections so that we can make sure that we time increases or decreases even to match those. They'll evaluate various scenarios to make sure that everybody is getting, being charged the fair share of the, the system. One of the things we will also ask them to do is look at evaluating the rates based on reduced rates for those impacted and also reduced rates for those that may have inabilities or difficulties paying their bills, just so that we can make those a little bit more affordable, where we can, they'll also do the cost of service allocations. They will do comparisons with other utility agencies so we can see where we stand as far as rates and any, look, any rates that we're looking at the potential to put in place. And I know that was asked about when we talked about the water fund. They'll evaluate the equity of the rates, they'll look at the impacts, and again, looking at disadvantaged customers. Then they'll come back and they'll actually present that to the public, to city council. They'll have workshops, and we'll walk through that in public, and they'll help us with that process. And one of the important pieces of that is that we do have to comply with Prop two eighteen as far as the, the notice, mailing the notices, the public hearing, and making sure that the information and the process we follow is, is legal and meets all of those requirements. The other piece we've talked about, which is in addition, and we may bring this in-house, particularly if we are able to get the finance staff in place, is the citywide indirect cost allocation. And what this is, is that these are the costs that are generated at city level that we pass on to our utilities and our other separate funds. So it's going to be the cost of your time, administration, finance, it's going to be the cost of HR. It's all of the support services that they would normally pay for if they were a separate entity, that we pass the cost. if they were a separate entity, that we pass the cost on. And we want to, we want to make sure that that is the right amount, that it's not too much and it's not too little. And we want to have the justification to show the rate payers that we have and we are doing that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any, any input you might have on, on the contract itself.
Councilmembers that are present, the DAS, do you have comments or questions? I'd like to, yes, go ahead.
No, I'm just glad that we're doing this thoroughly and publicly. I love that we're taking into consideration that people that, it's going to be hard, right? I mean, utility bills are ridiculous, PG&E bills are high. We're going to probably have to go through our garbage rates and raise those too. So yeah, any little bit of information that we can get to, to make this a little bit easier or at least justify why we need to do this is appreciated.
Thank you. And I'd like to go to our councilmembers that are on Zoom. So we'll start with Councilmember Atkinson Salazar.
Yeah, I don't have questions. I do, Tabitha, appreciate your thoroughness and that you really want to go the extra mile to make sure that everything's above board and we're doing things as we should and making sure that, you know, we, we do it correctly. And I appreciate that you heard us when we talked last time just about the concerns for people. I mean, it will hurt everyone, but there will be some people that just literally cannot pay more. And so if there is a way to offset that for those community members, I am all for that. So thank you for hearing that and building that into the process.
Thank you. And we'll go now to Council, Vice Mayor White, would you like to make a comment?
I had a question and some comments. So on item number 14, which is the presentations and public outreach, is that the order of operations? I'm thinking that if it's at the end, then we've already made a lot of decisions without public input. And I do concur with Stacy that it's going to be very scary for those that are on fixed incomes, in particular, the older adult community. And I'm wondering, in item nine, where it evaluates customer equity and rate impacts on customers, and it says confirm that all customers are charged for service proportional to how they use the utility systems. And I apologize, I'm not privy to that. Does that mean like businesses and commercial that utilize more service then are actually charged more, a higher rate?
It, it does mean that. So it looks at the types of, the types of customers, commercial and if we had manufacturing, various residential customers, and looks at from purely from an equitable use, not necessarily a financial, but an equitable use of the resources and making sure that the cost is appropriate and fair in those categories. So it's not necessarily looking at folks that might, might not have the financial means to pay.
Right.
And you are, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just, I don't know if we can do that. But using that equitable use model, could we take some of that money and put it towards a fund that might be able to supplement those who, for whatever reason, will have to do without service, which we know can't happen?
We are, we are going to look at all our opportunities as far as what, you know, looking at ways to help those who, you know, financially just can't afford the increases. I don't know that it would be from other customers. It may be something that we have to do with other funds, like general funds. But we are going to, we are going to have our folks at Bartle Wells look at all of our options and bring those back to us. And I did want to mention, you talked about sort of the public part of this process being at the end. It won't be, it won't be at the end as far as, they, they will help us with the public hearings and the process and the public aspect of it. But there will be many meetings going into it. And we will do the best we can, even though, you know, people may not be happy about it, but trying to get the information out early to make sure that the public is aware. It's kind of even this, you know, talking about it earlier, talking about it now, making sure that everything we do is in the public eye. So at least people have the opportunity to, to talk to us about it, raise it, and also at least understand, even if they disagree.
And that'll all happen, hopefully, ongoing and definitely before we prepare the draft and final reports, correct?
Yes. And you'll, the final, the draft reports will come back to city council and that will be probably the time that people will be aware of what the possible recommendations are. Obviously, you'll be making decisions there. But, but there'll be a public process that is before that, that information goes out in the form of notices and the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more comments or thoughts on Zoom or not? Okay. We don't have anyone on Zoom. We have no one in the audience that wants to speak on this item. So shall we bring it back to the council and we approve a contract?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve a contract in the amount of $125,375 to Bartle Wells Associates for Water and Waste Water Rates Capacity Charge Study and Indirect Cost Allocation Plan.
I'll second.
Thank you. And may we have, yes?
I just wanted to interrupt before moving forward with the vote. With the motion, can we include authorization for the city manager to execute all applicable documents?
So moved.
We'll have that added. That'll be included in the motion.
And is that still seconded?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's just not on the information here, so. Thank you. And so maybe we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Atkinson Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Stillman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tabitha.
So now we're going to move on to oral and written communications. And the city council values your comments and the public comment period allows to address the, I was going to switch that over. Do the council on matters not on the agenda? And speakers will be limited three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. And the council may not respond to statements. And also earlier in the meeting, under our first oral communications, I did read about a dialogue at the meetings. And I figured some of the most important things to remember is disruptive behavior includes speaking beyond the allotted time, discussing matters not relevant to the agenda or outside the jurisdiction of the city, making threats against councilmembers or the public, and engaging in personal attacks, insults, or using slanderous language that disrupts the meeting. I would just like to wish everyone to be very respectful to one another. And I just thought I should mention that at the end of oral communications. And is there anyone in the public that would like to speak tonight? Thank you.
My name's Tricia Murphy, and I'm here to support the idea of having a sister city in Palestine with the city of Arcata. I'm also here to try to raise awareness about what's actually happening there in Gaza and in the West Bank, in Syria, in Jordan, in Egypt. Sometimes I sit here and I listen to these meetings where you're going item by item about our budget. And I'm thinking, we should get used to this because it's going to get much worse. We have backed Israel in a big land grab in several places in the Middle East to the tune of trillions of dollars. And we're becoming a pariah state right along with Israel. We're becoming a bigger target every day. What's happening in Palestine is wrong. Gaza's a big open-air prison, and they've killed at least 200,000 people there. There was a report in the, in the New York Times that has typically, historically been very pro-Israel about how Israel is shooting children in the head and they're getting ready to go back in and start up again. They've blocked all aid, all food, all medical aid. They've blocked that again. They've reneged on their promise for the ceasefire deal, and that's very typical. They're in Syria stealing land and murdering people. They're in Lebanon doing the same thing. Jordan, Egypt are, are getting closer to wanting to go to war every day. We've, we've gone into, there were seven countries that Netanyahu wanted us to go into. And we've gone into all but Iraq at this point. There is a plan for a greater Israel, and we've been backing that plan to our detriment and to the tune of trillions of dollars. We're losing our standing in the world. We're maybe 95% of the world is against what we've done. We've used our, we've abused our veto power at the ICC and the ICJ. And we've done it for Israel, and we've done it because Israel has bought our politicians. Over 400 of our politicians in Washington in Congress are owned by Israel. We've allowed that to happen. And that's all I have to say. I very strongly support a sister city. I think if we can do anything to try to make up for the wrongs that we're currently doing and that we've been doing for the last 80 years, we should try to do that for Palestine and for all the other countries in the Middle East that are suffering because of Israel.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Would you like to speak? Okay. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do have a hand raised. Shannon, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I just am calling to speak in support of sharing culture and good, good positive vibes with Gaza. I think it's a great idea, and I'm just wondering why you all haven't signed on by now. Reality is staring us dead in the face. And I just think it's really sad to see some of the statements and the emails I have seen from some of the councilmembers still just straight-up propaganda. It's, it's really depressing. So I hope things change. I hope that you guys can sign on for a sister city where we can share culture and other things with that part of the world. I think it's the least that we can do as good-hearted folks who care about indigenous peoples' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else on Zoom?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of oral and written communications. We'll go on to council reports. So why don't we start with the, our councilmembers that are on Zoom? So let's go to Vice Mayor White. Do you have a council report this evening?
You know, I've been ill most of the week. But right before I did get sick, I did attend Redwood Region Economic Development Commission. And honestly, I don't have much more to report. Like I said, I've been ill. I do want to remind folks of the Playhouse Arts Zero to Fierce that's going on this week through Sunday, March 9. And I'm looking forward to attending the Central de Pueblo workshop on immigration coming later in March. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go on to Councilmember Atkinson Salazar for reports.
Thanks. I'll, I'll try to keep each thing brief because I have several things. I've, it's been just a busy couple of weeks for me. The CSU system, the state level, not just our local level, is working on an updated strategic plan. And I was invited to participate. And I also, councilmembers Matthews and Mayor Stillman were there too in a strategic listening session. And we were just invited to learn about and, and give feedback on the system. And they've been hosting town halls and providing other opportunities to gather community feedback. So if anyone is interested, I, I captured the information for like the, who to email or the website to go to or the engagement platform. So if you want to, if anybody's interested and wants to participate as a community member in that feedback, I do have the contact information for that that I'm happy to share. I went to the Humboldt Bay Offshore Wind Heavy Lift Marine Terminal Project Advisory Group that I sat on. And we were still, it's only the second meeting, so establishing like our membership and protocols, best use of time. I also had the California Transportation Commission Road Use Charge Technical Advisory Committee last week. And just again, we were, we've been looking at other states and what they've done as they've implemented road use charges. So as we go forward with that, sorry, I'm skimming here. And then I had the CalCog Board Meeting today, and that's very, it's transportation and housing focused. But the, there was a speaker there who spends a lot of time in Washington DC. And he just shared that not, not, that everything's at risk when it comes to funding and that there's just a lot, not a lot of certainty. And people are going to staff, staff members and asking questions and staff doesn't have answers. And that there will be, there have been a lot of federal layoffs. And, you know, he's seeing that. These are people he knows and works with. And it will impact our ability to interact with some of these agencies and in function. So just, you know, I appreciate that staff is being cautious and hopefully things work out. Because as Merritt said earlier, we do have staff whose salaries depend on all the grants that we get in. But it's, it's just a really different time, so. And that's all for me.
Thank you. And who would like to go next here? You would, okay, thank you.
I will go. It was a busy week last week of a lot of more community events and also meetings. But I was able, at the beginning of the, I guess, last, last week, attend, I actually missed the ribbon-cutting part. But Arcata has a new radio station playing out of the Playhouse, Humboldt Hot Air KHHA 94.7. I should know that because they made me say a little call-on thing. But I got to be on the first broadcast and briefly chat with Narely just about how exciting this is and what it means for Arcata. And it's really important right now to support our local media outlets and give people the opportunity to be on the airwaves and play music and talk and create art and supporting that. And so I'm really excited for them. I also, then I had an RCEA Board Meeting where we actually got to, because RCEA's rates are set lower than PG&Es, but alongside PG&Es, actually, RCEA had a really positive budget update, which was good to hear. But again, talking about ways how we can support our community to, you know, handle and tackle these really insane utility rates that we are seeing and working with the, you know, local agencies and what that all means. And then also, like, kind of alongside that, we did have some updates on what's happening federally and how that's going to really impact the energy landscape, you know, not only in California but across, you know, the United States. And so we kind of redoubled back down due to our more positive budget position on really focusing on renewables and, you know, keeping with RCEA's original goals. And then that same Thursday night, I quickly hopped over to and was able to attend the event that Redwood Peace and Justice put on with the folks from the Boulder Nobles Sister City. It was a good chance just to learn about what they did for that process. And then this weekend, I bowled on Friday and Saturday with Bowl for Kids' Sake. And you guys, if we're not doing this as a council next year, I'm going to be very sad because it's an amazing event. They raised over $60,000 for Big Brothers Big Sisters. I bowled both with my students and then also with Equity Arcata. With, our team didn't really show up, but Mo and I had a great time and bowled and hung out with everybody, and it was great. And then also Gino, who's on our board, was there as well. And then on Sunday, I went to the Folk Glory Code Dancers up at Cal Poly Humboldt, and it was amazing. And so just so many great things going on in our community. And then coming up this Thursday, there will be a chamber mixer at the North Coast Rape Crisis Team's office, which is kind of on the corner of Samoa and I there. I believe it's the same building that Richard's Goat is in. It has the big butterfly mural. And then also on Sunday is going to be the Home Away From Home Potluck. The Equity Arcata is sponsoring with Black Humboldt. It's going to be at the D Street Neighborhood Center from 5:00 to 6:00. So bring a dish if you're able to, or if not, just come on down and have conversation with folks in our community and students and, you know, have that opportunity. And then next week, I'm going to head to Yosemite on Thursday to attend the Civic Well Conference, which I'm really excited to hopefully feel re-energized in the face of scary government. And a lot of the focus is on a lot of environmental issues. There's a few speakers talking about wildfire resilience that I'm looking forward to. And some folks, like, there's going to be a Pasadena council member and folks down from the LA Fire speaking. So I'm looking forward to it, and it will be a great event. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Sure. So last week, I did meet with our city manager and Eric Keller Heckman, who is the executive director of HWMA, really trying to get...
is the Executive Director of HWMA, really trying to get SB 1383 in organics a little bit further along. I thank you so much for agreeing to meet with us, and hopefully we can see some music, some movement. I got to go, I'm an alternate for RCEA, so I got to go to the alternate training last week and visit my old stomping grounds at RCEA, meet the new Executive Director, Beth, who is amazing. I can't believe in like the short couple of months that she's been there, how much like knowledge of the very dense amount of information of RCEA that she's really managed to absorb. I'm so impressed. I think RCEA is in great hands, and even though I'll probably never have to go to a meeting, it felt really good to be informed about what they've got going on. Last week, I got to meet with our friends at the North Coast Growers Association to talk about some of, some accommodations that we're making to the farmer's market as we're getting into the summer market. You know, it's been really successful, I think, having the plaza closed down to traffic. I think we've gotten really amazing feedback, but just kind of doing some things like making sure that there's separation between some of the booths so you can walk to the businesses there. Talked about throwing down like rugs with arrows so you'll know that you can cross over and go to businesses and just adding more handicap parking and just making things generally a little bit easier. And you know, this will be, in April, it'll be the first full year of the farmer's market being closed to traffic, so I just really want to celebrate that and how accommodating the growers association has been. I was asked to be on the Cal Poly Humboldt Presents Advisoring Committee, so as, you know, the funds for Cal Poly Humboldt Presents are being cut as many things in the CSU system is, just trying to get together with a group of people and really figure out like how we can still bring great entertainment and presentations to Humboldt and kind of look at it a different way. So I haven't had a meeting for that yet, but I'm super excited. If anybody has yet had the opportunity to read the Mad River Union today, that just came out today, just don't freak out. It was a wrong, it was wrongly misstated. We did, at our last council meeting, we did approve a policy for inter-fund transfers. We did not yet approve that inter-fund loan, so just wanted to get that out there if people are like freaking out. And at the end of the month, I'll be headed to my League of California Cities Housing, Economic and Community Development Meeting, where we'll talk about some more policies that are coming down the road for those things. And boy, as always, I'm really impressed with all of us and all of the things that we do, so, all right.
Okay, well, I look like I haven't done anything compared to you two, everybody, but I will be going to Civic Well.
Wait, you are?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I didn't know, I thought I was going to be all alone.
No, I thought I was going to be all alone too, but I found out I'm not, because you just reported. No, I'll be there too. Yes, and I just, HTA, we had our meeting this morning, Humboldt Transit Authority, and we approved the, of the contract for the city of Arcata moving towards Humboldt Transit Authority, and also we approved a contract. They, they have Teen Challenge clean all their bus shelters, and they'll be adding all our bus shelters to that too. And they, they claim, they said that Teen Shelter works really well with homeless people that are hanging out in the bus shelters, and they've been able to move some of them into the Teen Challenge program. So that's all a bonus, and so I think we're going to be doing well that way. We also, where there was, we talked about, we needed to give our Executive Director some direction concerning the Measure O funds and how they'll be used according to transit versus not transit and what we're doing. And so there's, I, I think Humboldt Transit is doing a lot, and it's going to be quite interesting. Their hydrogen buses are coming. We saw pictures of them actually up there looking at what they're going to look like. And I think our hydrogen fueling station is going to be something we should really look at, how many other entities, like I think about the garbage trucks, could become hydrogen fuel and cars, because we'll have a whole facility in order to take care of that, because that'll be coming later this spring. We'll have the hydrogen fueling station in, and right now it, we'll have a temporary one for when our first bus comes, which will be later this coming month. So that's what I have going on there. Someone told me there's a little spelling error, or error, or it's a grammatical error in the new signs on the plaza, so I'll have to go look at that and see what it is. Oh dear. Because our old signs were probably there for almost 20 years, and that means the new ones could be there that long too. So we have no closed session, we have no closed session reports, and therefore we adjourned, and thank you all.
Can I add something real quick? I'm so sorry. I just want to remind people tomorrow night is the Arcata Chamber Mixer at the North Coast Bridge.
Sarah, she already said that.
Sorry, I told you I wasn't feeling well. My apologies.
No, no, Councilmember Schaefer, she handled that under many other things she told us about this evening. So thank you all, and I look forward to those that can come to Home Away to Home being there. Thank you. Good night.